The following program is sponsored by The Greek. It is Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, August 24th, 2022.
Commission meeting, all please stand and join us in the pledge. Mike on Ely's day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have a moment or two for a minute of silence, and then we'll start the meeting. Okay, we will go to Zoom for any public comment first. Anything on the computer, Mike? Okay, now both the audits, please come forward and state your name.
My name is Mike Nolett. I have received a registered letter from the Building Department on June 24th. Future of Rossford. Oh, sorry. That's okay. Anyway, it states that the property at 2397 North 48 West needs to be cleaned up, or that five acre parcel needs to be paved and/or concreted to keep the vehicles down there. I think that's a little out of line, but that's not why I'm here. The comments on, or the handwriting on the bottom of that page, a year ago, there was over $20,000 worth of broken windows on that property. I reported it to the Sheriff's Department. Alls I could get out of Scott Henry was not much I can do about it. Is it my, I think $20,000 worth of vandalism is considered a felony, is it not, Mike? Well, the lack of interest in prosecuting that bothered me. But when I got that letter, I was in the process of changing my will over to a trust. And when I'd done that, I had this done. I gave my interest in that property to one Cheryl Ratley. She's my stepsister. She's also Scott Henry's cousin. And any further comments or concerns over that property, I would appreciate it if you'd take it up with them, with her or my other two sisters. The three of them own that property jointly. I don't own it, don't own anything on it. From now on, I would appreciate it if you guys would direct your comments and concerns to the people that own the property. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name.
Chris Maces, McGill Town Council. I gave each of you a copy of the letter that I'm going to read to you. It's regarding the distribution of the unused COVID relief fund for the CARE Act. As you recall, the McGill Town Council in their correspondence dated July 27th, 2022, suggested using some of the COVID funds for the purchase of high-definition security cameras to be placed on top, front and back, of every fire station in White Pine County. As stated in our correspondence, by placing high-definition cameras on the top of every fire station in White Pine County, it would give law enforcement a full view of areas that they are not able to get to as quickly. A project of this magnitude would not cost that much, as county IT could have them installed, and there would be plenty of funds left over for worthy projects. McGill appreciates the masks and hand sanitizer he shared with us, but cameras could give great benefit for the safety and welfare of every resident in White Pine County. McGill Town Council first considered these cameras after a rash of vandalism in their parks. The ballpark had been vandalized. Unfortunately, the grade school camera could not reach the ballpark. Then McGill Town Hall and Volunteer Library had been broken into, again, no camera. By placing high-definition zoom cameras on all the fire stations, the cameras could zoom in and monitor every business and surrounding areas. Oftentimes, lives depend on the vast response of law enforcement by having the cameras automatically feed to the sheriff's dispatch that would aid the deputies when responding to emergencies in all the rural areas in our county. When McGill Town Council was applying for grant funding, Sheriff Henry had fully supported the idea of cameras in McGill and throughout White Pine County. Unfortunately, grant-funded projects like this have not been considered yet. Even our insurance company considered this camera project, but we have not heard if it's gone anywhere. It sincerely hopes that the White Pine County Commissioners will consider this very worthy and needed project for the safety and well-being of every resident in White Pine County. Respectfully submitted, Chris Maces, McGill Town Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item, the last one's on July, we call it in August. The Regional Transportation Board has not sent in our agendas to those who have requested any and any supporting material to be presented at that meeting. On August 18th, 2022, I attempted to attend the meeting, but no one showed up at the library. It was closed. I then went to Basin Engineering where they held their, or the old meeting from the library was not available, and they were closed. I came back to the library and asked Lori Romero if the meeting was canceled. She didn't know. She was good enough to call the Road Department, inquire if there was going to be a meeting. No meeting, no cancellation. It was clear violation in the bad open meeting law. Why is this board not sending out proper notifications? I've been attending those meetings for years. Mr. Chairman, I attended the Regional Funding Board meeting held on August 17th, 2022, and they approved the zone change from RA5 to C2 while, because the front portion of the property was highway frontage. However, it does not have access from the highway. Access is gained from a side street from an RA5 zoning. Access to commercial zones that face highway frontage are obligated to provide proper access from that highway. Selective enforcement was stopped. Planning Board is not, the Planning Board is incompetent, and the engineering surveying business that proposes such options should be held accountable for skirting around established requirements. The residents in that area deserve equal protection of the law. They've been very clear that they don't want commercial encroachment on that area. Zoning was granted, that's fine, but access needs to come off that highway if they're telling the fact that they have highway frontage, and it should be considered commercial. I want to remind you that that board should not have final say. They are not elected, and they do not have any credentials. I think, I thought baloney. The code sets, the law allows. You're not doing that. You don't need rookies on those kind of boards. They affect this community and its growth. Mr. Chairman, recently my property, 622 High Street, the Old Ely Grade School, was broken in for a second time within a 30-day period. The last time, the vandalists came with a pry bar and a sledgehammer to break in. The officers who responded did not have fingerprint kit or rubber gloves to collect evidence or take fingerprints. I'm requesting that the Commission take money from the American Investment Funds and provide a kit and gloves for every patrol vehicle entirely being broken into, entirely being vandalized. You folks are sending out a bad message to those that look at Ely and White Pine County.
That's sweet, George. Thank you.
I gotta move, the timer go off. Do you have a, I have another 10 seconds.
No, sit down.
I want some answers. I don't want to be too blunt like that.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, it will start at 9:05 with the Liquid Board, and I'll turn it over to Sheriff Henry.
Commissioners, morning. First item is number one, A. Discussion for possible action, approval of a request for a liquid license made by Brandon McComhoff for the period beginning September 2nd, 2022, and ending on September 4th, 2022, with the McGill Labor Day celebrations to be held at the Avenue Cave Park in McGill, on the 2nd, and McGill Pole Park on the 3rd, and the McGill Baseball Park on the 4th. Mr. McComhoff spilled out proper applications, paid your fees. I look for motion to approve.
I make the motion to approve.
On second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two is discussion for possible action approval of amendments from the following Road Board meeting held July 27th, 2022. Any corrections or changes that you may need to make?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we'll move to our 910 AM Road Commission Meeting. Discussion update on primary and secondary roads that have been life in County facilities, completed in future projects, communications with corporations and governmental agencies. Bill Fowler with Public Works Director, and Mark Trout, Road Superintendent.
Good point. Roads receiving maintenance, Shelburne East, Snake Creek, Big Wash, Mill Creek, 30 Mile, Westview Valley, Pinion Pines, Pinion, Pinion Wheel, Lane Osceola, Cave Valley, and Cross Timber subdivision. We have some washouts from the rains that we received. Those were roads that needed repair due to that. It was North Newark Valley, 30 Mile, Indian Summit, North Spring Valley. We had to do the pole road twice on the weekend. Cave Valley Road washed out three different times, and then Shelburne East and North Spring Valley also needed attention too. We hauled some material for repairs on the 30 Mile Road. We are continuing with our mag chloride program on 40th East, Shooting Range, Pennsylvania, and Pin Wheel Lane. We've done some culvert cleaning on 30 Mile, Little Oklahoma, Big Wash, and the Osceola Road. We replaced some stop signs across Timbers in the McGill area. We replaced a damaged sign at Harfault at Willow Creek Ranch. We're doing some mowing on our right-of-ways, which at this point in time is kind of a waste because we have to go back because of the rains. We've done some asphalt patching on the Cherry Creek Road, and we are starting to haul, we hauled chips in this time period, and that actually road is getting chipped, Cherry Creek Highway is getting chipped this week. We applied for two real estate right-of-way applications for the BLM in Newark Valley. That's so we can see if we can get some wells established through Western Oil. And then the city owes, city owes White Pine County eight hours. That's an hour change from that.
At the last County Commission meeting, there was question as to when the center yellow lines would be replaced on the Lackawanna Road. I know that at one time that I saw Martin Trout out there when he was checking for the delineators, where those needed to be picked, had, need to be replaced. There's no, there's no yellow line.
Right, and when we work out deals with, we work with the Department of State Highway, and when they either stripe in, that's, they do it for us. We do some work, maybe clean some culverts wherever from them because they don't have to get a vacuum truck from Elko. In exchange, they'll do some painting. So we, they've done a lot of chip jobs, so they're going to definitely do some painting, but we're kind of at their mercy as far as the schedule goes. We don't have that kind of equipment.
I did not know that at the time, and so I thought I'd bring it back up again to see how that was working.
And I think you've seen that on the Route Highway too. There's public comment about the Route Highway. I mean, so.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, well, I've got something, real quick. I talked to you this morning, I mentioned it before, the roads that we decided, and I'm comfortable with it, that are going to be brought to standard county roads. I've driven on a couple of them, and believe it or not, but I asked for a date, or approximate date of when we are going to start doing the work to repair those. You explained to me, I'm just trying to say this for the record, that you explained to me that as we move forward, that we will be bringing those along, and I want to make sure that we stay on top of that so that those roads can be brought from a non-standard to standard where there's a lot of residents, and we've identified those. And I just, for the record, would like to have it there that we are proceeding, as time allows, to bring those roads up to standard county roads and put them on the roster.
That's correct.
Thank you, guys. That's all I wanted.
Okay, we'll move to item two. Discussion for possible action, approval to award bid for one self-contained portable material screen plant. Bill Fowler.
Thank you. We received two bids. Only one of the bids met our required specs. We were looking for a pole behind. One of the people, one of the bids we received was a track-mounted screen plant, which is not what we want. We had to make it work with our stacker belts and things like that, so it just wouldn't make specs. So the one bid that did make specs and within budget is from Kimball Equipment. We budgeted $200,000 for this project. The one bid that did make specs has a price of $161,914. After saying that, part of the thing, part of the bid specs was requested delivery time. They are looking at June of next year.
Wow.
That's the way, I don't know, I guess if it doesn't get delivered by then, we'll carry it into next fiscal year. Heck, we've been waiting five months, months for the window at the admin building. Just, the way things are, we just, they're just not going to deliver on time, or they don't have anything made and ready to be delivered. They wait one order at a time, it's built, so. Other than that, my recommendation is for award, award to Kimball Equipment.
I'll look for motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Any second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passion unanimous? Item three. Discussion for possible action, approval of amendments from the following Road Commission Meetings, July 13th and 27th, 2022.
Motion to approve as presented.
You get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passion unanimous? Move to 915, Natural Resources. Discussion information only regarding the White Pine County Natural Resources and Public Land Issues Tracking List. Jeremy Drew. Jeremy?
Good morning, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. For your record, Jeremy Drew with Resource Concepts Incorporated. Just a quick select updates from the tracking list for you all, and you'll notice that I have rearranged this kind of more bitopical area than chronological order, so things might be a little bit out of order from what you've seen before. I would start by saying we had a very good and active meeting several weeks ago. It was very nice to see Ms. Baldwin supporting the committee now, so I anticipate we'll have very productive meetings going forward. With that being said, BLM Safebrush Discovery Trail is the first one I'll touch on. That does have an open comment period right now. Comments are actually due today, and that is item number three under Natural Resources. There was a lot of discussion at the committee meeting, or questions I should say, around the status of Cave Lake. I was able to contact Endow to get an update on what's going on. There were some delays through Public Works on letting the contract, they anticipate the contract to be offered or advertised in the next month. The one lead item that they were very worried about was the outlet structure because of lead time on anything to do with metals. That structure has actually already been ordered and is in progress. So while they don't anticipate construction or reconstruction of the dam for summer of '22, they do anticipate that they should be able to finish construction next summer. So at least one more year with Cave Lake being drawn down. You'll recall several meetings ago, we had a discussion on the proposed monument designation in Spring Valley. The folks who presented that did not make the last Natural Resource Advisory Committee meeting, but we have invited them to the upcoming one in September. So we hope to have a presentation in more detail then, hopefully with a recommendation coming back to the board subsequent to that meeting. I will just mention, we've had the BLM statewide resource management plan on our agenda or tracking list for some time now. We got a meeting, a meeting update last week in Elko. BLM is still awaiting authorization from the DC office, so that plan moving forward is not imminent, although the state office is still supportive of moving that forward. And one of the main components they're wanting to look at across all districts is the issue of renewable energy development, because it's not just an issue for White Pine County, but across the state. Obviously, we've got a slew of transmission projects. We're cooperating agency on both the crosstie and pump storage. Swift North is moving forward with some of their rod obligations, and Green Link is also starting in some kind of pre-NIPA coordination, but nothing formal there. Going to page two, mining vault mountain continues to move forward. This planned operation through the cooperating agency process. The formal release of the EIS is not imminent, but I do anticipate it will be published by the end of the year. One note on wild horses. BLM was actively gathering the Triple B complex north of Ely. I believe their plan was to gather up to 1,900 horses, which on paper sounds great, but I think that's about a third of what's in the complex. But any, any progress there is good progress. And then we'll talk about it on the next agenda item, but we did have a task order that we put before the Natural Resource Committee on updating the public land policy plan by adding an energy section, and the recommendation was to support that. Next INRAC meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 20th, at 5:30. Chairman, with that, I will stop. For any questions?
Yeah, it is Richard Howe. I have one, a couple of questions, really. Going back to the Cave Lake project, and we're good with 2023, what is the timeframe once that dam is completed to fill the lake, to make it a viable fishing hole, or bring it back up to what it was? If you start in 2023, will it be used for fishing during that year? How long does it take?
Yeah. Commissioner, that is a great question, and obviously, a lot of it's going to depend on, A, when they finish the repairs, and then B, the sorts of winters that we get. I do know that they're a little bit concerned about holding 100% of the drainage back to refill the lake, because they don't want to impact the fishery that's doing very well at Cummins. So I would anticipate if they finish construction, call it late summer, fall of '23, I would be very surprised if they weren't putting fish back in the next spring at latest. I would doubt they will put fish in ahead of the winter just because of concerns with ice. So I think you're probably looking at a viable fishery, if they, if they complete construction in the summer of '23, probably starting in the summer of '24, and then for it to get back, you know, to where it was in terms of some really mature big fish, you're probably looking at three or four years in total. I will say, a lot of times when they drain and refill a lake, that it kind of resets the food web, and the fish that do hold over, that they plant and don't get caught, have a tendency to grow very fast. And so I would anticipate that there will be several years where Cave Lake is going to be a phenomenal, phenomenal fishery before it kind of settles back into what it's going to be long term.
Thank you. That was, that's what I needed, so if somebody asks, we can at least give them an idea. The other item, I don't know if I'm putting the cart before the horses, the one on the crosstie, 500 KV.
Let me open that.
Oh, okay.
I'll open item two, discussion for possible action approval for two task order amendments. Phase two for PLPP update, energy section, and phase four for crosstie 500 KV transmission line for RCI, Jeremy Drew.
Another Jeremy's. Go ahead.
Chairman, I'll take both of these quickly upon. So phase two is a $4,000 task order amendment. This is to develop an energy section that ultimately would be vetted through the Natural Resource Advisory Committee, and ultimately, the Commission for possible inclusion in the public land policy plan. As we talked before in reviewing that, that's a plan I use a lot to develop comments, we noticed that there's nothing specific to energy, and obviously, between the transmission lines and all the applications for solar, wind, and even the pump storage project, I think it would behoove the county to have some policies in place on that that we can use for comments going forward. The task order itself is very simple. Again, the Resource Committee did recommend approval to the Commission of this with no changes. As far as phase four goes, this is very similar to a phase we had under last fiscal year. White Pine County participates in cooperating agency reviews and meetings as appropriate. I will tell you that a lot of the work on the crosstie is specific to Utah because they're trying to figure out alternatives and alignments that don't impact the Utah test and training range. So our participation isn't quite as intensive as some of the folks on the Utah side, but I do think it's worthwhile to be engaged when appropriate in cooperating agency. And then by the end of this fiscal year, I would imagine the draft EIS will be out for formal comments, and as we do with all our comments, that will be worked back through the board. So this task order essentially just covers what I anticipate the workload to be on this project between now and the end of year fiscal year. And Commissioners, happy to take questions or comments.
My, my, my point was to try to, again, look forward to a date of when the construction will start, because with the two power reliance and the pump storage, we could have a major influx at one time in 2024, and we need, we need to start working on being prepared for that with algae and some other stuff that goes on. So if we had a date or a close to date, 2024, I think, was the original date that they would probably start construction. Am I right?
Commissioner, I would have to verify that, and I'll go back and double check for you because I think, I think they do have a target date. They're, they haven't even published the draft EIS, so I'd anticipate it's going to require them through 2023 at least to finish the NIPA, and quite frankly, probably into '24. I think you're correct in that construction is likely to start in '24, and then the question becomes, are they starting on the Utah side or the Nevada side? Because even if they started in '24, they may not be in the White Pine County until '25 or beyond. I think you're probably looking at several year timeframe to get that project built. But I will verify that, Mr. Howe, and get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll look for a motion to approve the task order amendments. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, or number two and number three, is that right, Travis?
No, number.
Just number two.
Number two.
I'll make a motion to approve number two.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passion unanimous? Item three. Discussion for possible action, approval of a comment letter to the Safebrush Discovery Trail Environmental Assessment for non-motorized trail near Baker, Nevada. Jeremy Drew, RCI.
And Chair, just to mention, we did have two phase orders there. I, and I apologize, we had two and four. But I can, I can do item number three, and then it's up to your discretion, obviously, if you want to reopen to, to approve task item four. So quickly, on item number three, we have a draft letter generally in support of the Safebrush Discovery Trail. If you'll recall, this is a trail that kind of arcs around the edge of Baker. It's an existing two-track road that is really redundant based on my boots-on-the-ground assessment several months ago. The folks out in Baker and with the Snake Valley Trails Association have been very supportive of this. There's a Snipla grant in place to move the project forward. And so what you'll find in the letter is generally, we're very supportive. We support the proposed action alternative B. There is, I think, going to be some issues associated with State Route 487, where they will probably need to get encroachment permits, and if they're going to have access to a parking area there, they're likely going to have to get that, which can be costly. So what we kind of suggested is if the project cost begins to exceed the Snipla awarded amount, that maybe they look at eliminating that portion of trail so that they can get the other portions built. The only other comment that came up in the Resource Advisory Committee, Baker Ranches was a little bit concerned with one of the figures that identified several of their irrigation ditches as perennial or seasonal creeks and streams, and so we've made a recommendation in here to update that map. And so we've made a recommendation in here to update that map and then also make the travel and transportation management plan very clear that administrative and emergency access would still be, would still be allowed along the trail in case you have a, you know, fire situation or search and rescue or EMT type situation. Again, I'm happy to pause and answer any questions on the letter.
There are no questions, all for a motion to approve.
A motion to approve, and well done, Jeremy. I, I like the detail reaffirming those concerns that the Bakers had in regard to the stream, the streams that they recalled. And I know that they've also have commented on that, but a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bash unanimous? Thank you, Jeremy. Have a good day.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Did we have one more?
Thank you.
Well, I think that, I think that there, it says that there's two task orders, so when I made the motion, I just, the motion to approve is.
Okay, we got all three.
Yeah.
All right, leads us to our nine-thirty. Can I open these both at once?
Yes. All right, you will.
All right, item one is public hearing, second reading, discussion for possible action. The White Pine County Board of Commissioners will take public comment and consider the approval of force ordinance number five-two-eight, bill number oh-seven-two-seven, twenty twenty-two H, amend ordinance four-seven-three, amending title eleven, chapter eleven point four-eight, section eleven point four-eight point oh-two-oh of the White Pine County Code.